Good evening, everyone. I call the Marlinton Local School District Board of Education regular meeting to order on December 17th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reading the mission statement will be by Mr. Josh Hagan.
In collaboration with staff, community, parents, and students, the Marlinton Local School District will develop lifelong learners who understand and apply knowledge and demonstrate excellence in pursuing the highest standards with effective intervention to challenge every student.
Thank you. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education and public for the purpose of conducting the school district's businesses and is not to be considered a public community meeting. Dr. Maine, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Gabriel?
Here.
Mr. Hagan?
Here.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here.
Mrs. Stevens?
Here.
Josh, on the meeting agenda, I recommend that the Marlinton Local Board of Education adopt the following agenda for the December 17th, 2020 meeting with one correction being deleting Section 8 for executive session, which will not be needed. Or not executive session, excuse me. We're kicking executive session, we're deleting the personnel recommendation following executive session. Are there any other additions or corrections? Is there any further discussion? Dr. Maine, please call the roll.
Did we have a motion? I'm sorry.
Have a motion. So moved.
Back in.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yeah.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved by zero.
Dr. Maine, was there any public participation that was submitted for this evening's board meeting?
No documents received.
Thank you. Old business discussion on lease purchase discussion. Dr. Schuffler?
Good evening, everybody. We have tonight with us, as you know, we have Scott Dodds and Scott Lawrence from Consumers National Bank. And they are prepared tonight, they're going to give you a little presentation as well as answer any questions that you have. Very similar to the other bank that we had just a short couple of weeks ago. And all of you should have viewed in your email today the amortization rates, et cetera, from consumers. So I'm going to turn it over to Scott and Scott, and we'll go from there.
Hello, everybody. This is Scott Dodds. I am the Senior Loan Officer of the bank. And I hope everybody's having a good holiday season. For allowing Consumers Bank this opportunity to present the proposed terms for funding of your improvements at Washington, Lexington, and Marlborough Elementary Schools. We pride ourselves in being involved as your local bank, partnering with you to keep your local economy strong. We hope you're going to be your bank of choice for this transaction. With me tonight is Scott Lawrence, who's in our Business Banking Group, has been working with several people from your group to help craft this agreement tonight. He works out of your area and is available for questions at any time after the meeting as well. Want to let you know that in the past, Consumers has done many transactions like this. We've done scoreboards, asphalt turf, buildings and all kinds of things. So we're pretty familiar with how this goes and what we have to do to get it accomplished. We've even had, I believe, a couple of deals with your bond counsel, Rebecca Princehorn. So with that said, I'm going to go into the proposal that we're making. And it is pursuant to Ohio Revised Code. And we've talked to our attorney about this proposal. And we've also spoken a little bit to Rebecca Princehorn as well. So what we do in this proposal is, as you know, in the state of Ohio, schools are restricted. You can't have mortgages on your properties. So this instrument allows us to create a lease. And you are the leasing, and we are the lessor. And that allows us to give you the money for the building. And allows us to complete the transaction legally. So the lease is anticipated, we're hoping, to be authorized by your board either in December or January. And I think that's based on timeframes that you guys have. Purpose of the lease is to improve real property at Marlinton, Washington, Lexington, or Marlborough, Washington and Lexington Elementary Schools. And we understand that Marlborough may not be included in this, but we've included it as part of this presentation. The amount of the lease is up to 4.7 million. And we've given you two options after talking with your folks. They wanted a seven-year and a 10-year option. So option one's 84 months, option two is 120 months. Term of our lease, you guys may be familiar that most banks make the term of the lease five years longer in the amortization of the lease in case something happens that we would take the building back over and pitch it to somebody else, we would try to recoup any funds still due under the lease. We've never had that happen, don't anticipate it's going to happen. But we like to have it in the document. And as soon as this is paid in full, because we think you guys are planning on prepaying this, it'll be terminated as soon as it's paid in full. Option one, we have a fixed interest rate of 1.69%. Option two, for the 10-year, is 1.95% fixed. And I think the difference in the rates are really representative of how flat the yield curve is right now. From page two, our fees are going to be $5,000, and that includes all of our legal counsel on our side and any other costs we have. And my guess is that's going to be almost taken up at that point. So we've decided to charge a flat fee of $5,000 for the transaction. Optional prepayment, you can pay this in part or in whole at any time without penalty. Laterals, a ground lease on the Washington, Lexington, and Marlborough Elementary Schools, along with the UCC filing on all assets. We have some amortization schedules that Scott will offer after I'm done presenting this and take questions. He'll give you some information about how much money you might save from a seven-year versus a ten-year. Lock these rates in, that went through January 30th of 2021. My understanding, we want to try to have a deal done by then. If it's not funded by that date, we're going to renegotiate the interest rate. And we do have an anticipated closing date of January 30th, 2021. And we have some conditions on the proposal. It's not a commitment letter, it's not a letter to bind the bank in any way. At this point, we're proposing a proposal. And that is it. Does anybody have any questions? Pretty straightforward.
So the earliest you would close would be the end of January, is that what you're saying?
We could close before that.
Okay.
We're anticipating that's the latest it would close.
That would be the latest?
Yes, at this point. If you don't agree with that, we can change it.
Okay.
Is that the timeline? Go ahead, Carolyn, sorry.
Um, it's simple interest, calculated daily. So if we were able to make more payments upfront, that would just reduce the overall term of the loan, is that correct?
Yes.
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
And I think prepayment and no prepayment penalty was something you guys wanted.
Correct.
So this is priced.
And then you had said that you have been working with Rebecca Princehorn, so you would be able to meet all their criteria for the legal portion of this lease?
Yes. What we would do, heavy lifting on this, is done by attorneys. So Rebecca would put her transaction together, and we would have our attorney view it. She's pretty good, so there's not a lot to review.
Okay.
And we have a previous relationship with another, with another dealing, that some other dealings that we've done with her in the past. So she is familiar with working with us at Consumers as well.
Okay. Does the board have any further questions for Consumers? Or Dr. Mike or Patty, do you have any further questions?
I do not. We spoke previously.
Yep, I think I'm good. Both Scott's and I and Patty have been talking for quite some time, so.
Okay.
I do not have any more questions for those two.
Did you guys, did you want to talk amortization schedules tonight? I know Scott sent them to you. Do you just want to review them and call us with any questions? Or I'm trying to, I don't know if you guys wanted to do that in the interest of time, or just, or go ahead and go through it.
I mean, while you're here, I wouldn't mind you going through those, that would be fine.
Yeah, so we'd sent out a couple of different options of what we were thinking as far as repayment terms for this lease. Well, obviously, both the amortization of both a seven-year term and a 10-year term. And then within the seven- and 10-year term, we gave you two options of whether you wanted to make semi-annual principal and interest payment. And you can see those in the two varying schedules. We set it up to where a payment would come due, just hypothetically, it's not set in stone, but June 30th every year and December 30th every year. And I believe in talking with Dr. Maine and just knowing when revenues, tax revenues to the school district come in, that a June and a December payment would be feasible for you guys as far as a cash position at those two points in time. And then we also gave you guys an amortization schedule that would show semi-annual interest payment. So just the interest-only portions of the lease would come due in June and December with a major principal reduction to be done every December. So, you know, on the seven-year option, paying the semi-annual principal and interest, you know, over the total life of this lease here, that's going to be about a $15,000 savings to the school district. It's about the same dollar amount with the 10-year, making the semi-annual principal and interest payment. We did kind of do a hypothetical modeling of an amortization schedule for you all this evening. Or I did it ahead of time here before the meeting because we know that a major component of repaying this lease off for the school district would be significant income from the Nexus pipeline that the school districts receive each year. And in talking previously to Dr. Mike and Dr. Patty Maine, you know, we know historically what that dollar amount comes to. So I also, you know, kind of did a scenario where every year in December, instead of the regularly scheduled principal payment that would do, you would chunk down, let's say, a million dollars in December every year from Nexus Pipeline funding. That option would save the school district probably close to $225,000 over the life of this lease if in every December here for the next four years until this is paid off, that the district made a sizable approximately $1 million principal payment each year. So I think you kind of mentioned earlier, Carolyn, about, you know, the sooner that the principal gets reduced off the loan would reduce the interest expense over the life of the loan.
Right.
So that's why we wanted to present you guys with a few different options because we knew that this is something we'll probably have to determine here before this is closed about how the district wants to repay the lease that is conducive towards the district's cash position, cash flows, when revenues come in. So we're definitely open to thoughts and suggestions from you folks as well. But we did want to present you this evening with a few different amortization schedules showing what the hypotheticals would look like under both scenarios.
And what you're saying, if I understand it correctly, is that, say, for example, we go with the seven-year loan with both the principal and interest payments every six months, then we can pick and choose throughout the term of that lease any additional principal. We are not locked into any certain payment of additional principal, is that correct?
Since we have a no prepayment clause we'll have in this lease, you know, if the first payment that would come due, let's say, in June 30th of this year, under the seven-year with the semi-annual, you know, that payment right now would be $357,000. And let's say the school district at that point in time made the decision to put $500,000 or $600,000 additional towards principal at that point in time, that would just further reduce the interest throughout the life of the lease. So yes, there's no prepayment penalty, you know. It's like we always tell people that we like to reward our customers and our clients for paying off debt. So, you know, you guys with your own funds, if you choose to pay us off early, that puts you guys in a better position. And truly, that's what we're about, is we're here to serve our clients. And we want to see, you know, businesses and school districts and the community at large do well. So, you know, we don't want to penalize you guys for additional revenues that would come into the school district, say, through the Nexus Pipeline. If you guys choose to make the decision to pay us down early, we certainly wouldn't mind that as well.
Thank you. Are there any further questions or discussion?
Everything looks great forward to me. If I have any questions, I'll forward them on to Dr. Mike at a later point, but at this point, I don't have.
We'd like to thank you guys for your time. And, you know, we've spent some time here the last weeks and months working with Dr. Mike and Dr. Maine as well, too. Appreciative of their time. So thank you guys for the opportunity to present our proposal to you this evening and look forward to, you know, future relationship with you guys.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the information, and I appreciate you attending the meeting to go over all this.
Thanks, guys. Have a good holiday.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mrs. Gabriel, maybe this would be a good time for me to talk to the board then about how we would proceed. So I have, Becky Princehorn yesterday gave me a sort of generic resolution where we say we're going to do the lease purchase, but we don't name the bank. I think it makes more sense at our first January meeting to, as a leadership team, do the whole thing at once. Name the bank, make the resolution. And I'll be honest, she also gave me some assurances that I need to read and digest. They're a few pages long, so I think it makes more sense to give everybody two more weeks to digest, ask questions. And then as a team, just do it all in one swoop, you know, name the bank and make the commitment. I'm not concerned about the Huntington rates. The rates they gave us expire the 21st of December, but that's just a phone call to our rep there to say, if, you know, if you would choose Huntington, that would be a phone call to the rep to say, what are your rates now? Because sometimes rates do change, and that's why the bank puts a limit on those, a date, an expiration date on those. But we would have plenty of time then after the seventh, whichever bank you choose then would have time to make, prepare a closing date then.
Thank you. And along with that, I know the board has talked extensively about using the Nexus money to pay this back. So if possible, I think it would be advantageous just to have another commitment resolution from the board pledging that money to repay this lease purchase, you know, as quickly as possible. So if that could also be prepared in conjunction with our January meeting, that would be helpful as well.
Sure, we can do that, and that's not out of the ordinary for a board to, in different circumstances, to kind of make a promise to the community. And we could certainly have a resolution that states that.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to new business, appointment of President Protown for the organizational meeting. Is there a motion to appoint a President Protown for the organizational meeting for the Marlinton Local Board of Education? January 7th, 2021. And we will need a nomination for the President Protown.
So did Danielle make the motion?
Yes.
We need to name a person. We need to make a, name a person.
Okay. I nominate Carolyn Gabriel.
Second.
And is there a second?
Second. I'm sorry, my internet keeps cutting out. Second.
So is there a motion to appoint Carolyn Gabriel as President Protown for the organizational meeting for the Marlinton Local Board of Education on January 7th, 2021?
Moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll. You're on mute, Patty.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved by zero.
Just a quick note, just to remind everybody, because you only do it once a year. So on the seventh, correct, it's the seventh, yeah, you'll have the organizational meeting and then a regular meeting. So those will all be done on the seventh. There's no reason that meets the deadline that the state puts out. There's no reason to have two meetings early. So we'll proceed for both of those on the seventh.
Did you want to discuss that date to make sure that is okay with everybody at this point? Because usually we have a discussion at some point about the date. Is everybody okay with the January 7th date?
That falls on the night we regularly would meet anyway.
Right, right.
I'm fine with that as well.
Scott, Karen? You good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Would we be having that at our 7:00 time, or are we doing it at an earlier time?
That's a good question.
That's completely up to the board.
Um, 7:00 is good, or do you want to back it up to 6:30? It's, uh.
6:30, you're fine.
That's fine with me.
So do the organizational meeting at 6:30 with a regular meeting to follow, is that how we're going to do it? Does that sound good?
That sounds good.
Okay. Okay, um, Resolution Substitute House Bill 404. Dr. Mike, did you want to present that?
Yes, let me say a couple of words about that. I asked to put that back on the agenda. Dr. Maine and I did some more research, talked to colleagues. And the state lumped a couple of things into this substitute bill, one of which is it gives the administration some leeway in the very time-consuming and complicated teacher evaluation system. So it gives, but the board would have to approve it, and it gives us the authority to say, you know, we didn't get these done because of the time commitment, teachers may not have been in session, things were crazy because of COVID. Each one of those takes a lot of time to do for each teacher, so that's the only reason we added that back in. It does carry the, you know, that allows the board to keep meeting virtually.
Is there a motion to prove the superintendent's recommendation for the resolution concerning Substitute House Bill 404 is presented and marked Exhibit GGGG?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I appreciate the fact that it has to do with the teacher evaluations, and to that, you know, I'm for giving you time. I don't like that they lumped in the virtual meeting thing, but for that reason, I'll be voting no.
Patty, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys?
No.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved by one.
Dr. Mike, did you want to discuss the PlugSmart Resolution?
Yes, so you have, and you've had for a few days, the PlugSmart Resolution, which names PlugSmart as our contractor for our remodeling project. And, you know, of course, it's contingent on the lease purchase, but this will give PlugSmart a chance to even just have everything ready to go the day that we approve the bank. We need to do this, as we talked about, so that they can be ready to start lining people up. I don't think a lot's going to happen anyway in the next, you know, between now and the 31st because of the holidays, but at least PlugSmart will be ready to go then, and we can just keep this in motion.
Is there a motion to prove the superintendent's recommendation for the resolution selecting the contractor for energy? Is there a motion to prove the superintendent's recommendation for the resolution selecting the contractor for energy conservation of facility improvement measure project is presented and marked Exhibit HHHH?
So, moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, I have some comments. As I previously stated, I do not support moving forward with repairing both Lexington and Washington Elementary School buildings. To clarify, since Marlboro was reopened and repairs were made, I'm not in agreement with repairing both remaining elementary buildings when this district's enrollment does not require both and funding does not support both. Making wise balance requires assessment of the current situation, and there is nothing going up at Marlington but our debt. Specifically, number one, we continue to deficit spend, and that means spending more than we're taking in. Number two, our enrollment is 134 students this year, which means we lose the approximate $6,000 each student brings in. Number three, we're unsure of the exact amount paid by Nexus and when those amounts will come to us, but we do not, but we do know that only partial payments are coming for a couple of years while the appeals play out. And four, due to COVID, a freeze on property tax valuations has been proposed, which, if approved, is yet another hit on our income. Also to clarify, there have been no cost-cutting measures proposed or discussed, only a continuation of moving forward with additional debt to this district. I don't know how that is appropriate, wise, or fiscally responsible when we don't know what the actual cost, financial or educational cost, will be to our students. Since the school district's biggest cost is, there's no doubt that staff will have to be cut in the near future. Then, not only does that make expanded program offerings impossible, but keeping current programming in place becomes impossible. It just doesn't add up. In this unprecedented time in history, when we've made a very apparent turn in how public schools function, it would be wise to focus our attention on the educational, mental, and emotional needs of the students, which encompasses the sustainable educational space needed, rather than make decisions based on a snapshot of past wants, hopes, or even political promises made. We have moved far beyond that point now. To conclude and be completely clear, I do not support taking on additional long-term debt at Marlington right now for the repair purposes of two elementary buildings.
I would like to just say, Karen, that I do feel that, I understand that, I mean, what we're all doing here is for the students and the staff here at Marlington. That's, that's what we're here for. So, fixing those two buildings that are in such dire need of being repaired and fixed is what is benefiting our students educationally, emotionally, and mentally for better educational environment, which they have needed for so very long. And it's not because of a political standpoint or things that we promised. It's just doing what the community wants and what our community needs. And obviously, that's what our community needs, and we can't just sit here and not make repairs when they are much needed for all three elementarys. I mean, if something was wrong at your house due to COVID, you would still make those repairs, correct? Your premise goes out, you're going to make the repairs that are needed, so that way you can have a better emotional, mentally and physical environment at home, so we need to do that for our students and our staff as well. That's, that's what we're serving. That's why we ran, all five of us have ran and been elected by the community to be good stewards of our environment and our educational system, so we need to put those repairs back into those elementary schools, it's in our staff.
That sounds really great, but it has to be paid for, and if other things suffer, and if the education suffers otherwise, we can have this discussion repeatedly. The truth is the truth. This is how I've seen it, and this is what I know, believe to be true. And, and it is true. We haven't seen it. What, what cost measures, what this is going to cost the education, the actual education to the students. So, when that comes forth, I hope the community is still happy with that, because you're, we're shooting ourselves in the foot if we just keep repairing things and faces, but the kids aren't there to do it. We've, again, lost 134 students this year. So, that's a trend we don't want to continue, and if you spend money poorly, or if the community thinks you're spending money poorly, that's not exactly a way to invite additional students in. So, this is my, this is the way I see it. This is what I've, the position I've held the entire time, the third year of my term, and it's not about township for me. It's not about a building for, it's not about any sort of it, but fitting what we're supposed to do within the financial, the educational, and the community confines that we have. So, we obviously disagree. I'm just stating my opinion once. This is a mistake to enter into debt when we could be using that money for other things.
I do understand that, but I would like to just touch base again and say it's not, it's not about one township. Our district is made up of three townships, and we're looking to repair all three elementary schools that were so desperately in need of repair from the boards in the past, not putting the repairments into those elementary schools. And also, I understand that you're not for that, in our opinion, as well as being on this board, but also in your three-year term, you did vote for having a consolidated elementary school when the school was still in deficit spending at that time or close to it, and that was against the community's wishes. So, I think what we're just trying to do is make the repairs that are needed according to the community's wishes, and we can just talk and fight over this every single time, but also, don't you think that maybe that's why 134 students have left? Because we're in such a disagreement as a board. That's not being a good example nor good leadership. So, if we can just make the repairs needed and start doing good for our community, that's what we're here for in the long run.
I've been told by some, I mean, a number of students have left, and it wasn't because of that. It was because of poor spending decisions. So, you know, as I said, everybody has, people that talk to them, I know, but, you know, that sounds real good, but if you don't have the money to pay for it, you, I mean, you can wax as eloquent as you want. It doesn't matter. So, that's my opinion. That's where I'm at.
Okay, thank you, Karen, and I agree that we can talk about this over and over, but we've already had this discussion multiple times, and I think everybody's pretty much made their points for the direction they want to go, so I don't see any point in continuing to have the same discussion over and over, as you said. Thank you.
Patty, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabrick?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan? Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
No.
Dr. Mason?
No.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
3 to 2.
Treasurer's agenda, Dr. Patty May?
Thank you. The first item on my, on the agenda is to approve some minutes from the regular meeting on November 19th as well as December 3rd.
Is there a motion to prove the treasurer's recommendation for the minutes for the November 19th and December 3rd meetings?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabrick?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
I'm going to abstain, Patty, just because I was absent for the December 4th meeting due to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Approved, 4-1 abstained. The second item on the list is the financial reports for the month of November. The first one is the, is the cash account. And again, if you look at the third page, you'll see the receipts for the month in the second column versus the expenditures. And then again, you'll see the, the year-to-date receipts in the third column versus the fifth column of expenditures.
Is there a motion to prove the treasurer's recommendation for the financial reports and overview of receipts and expenditures for the period ending November 30th, 2020, as presented and marked as Exhibit III, 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 and Exhibit JJ, JJ?
So, moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabrick?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries? Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved, 5-0. The next item is just some revenue revisions and some appropriation revisions. I'd just like to call your attention to probably closer to the bottom, you'll see a, an addition for revenue for $59,817. I just want to call your attention that those are, those are RONA relief funds from our townships, and all three townships either, either provided some of their funds or bought items with their funds.
Is there a motion to prove treasurer's recommendation for the revenue and budget revisions as presented and marked Exhibit KK, KK, and LL, LL? So, move.
Second.
Was, was there a second on that?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any discussion? I do wish to thank all of our, all three of our townships for their contributions toward our district to help us with these expenses. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabrick?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved, 5-0. And the last piece is a donation of some tools to Washington Elementary Dean Club.
Is there a motion to prove the donations for the month of November 2020 as presented?
So, move.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Add that donation was from Fran Calvin.
And on behalf of the board, we wish to thank our donor for that generous donation. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabrick?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved, 5-0.
Is there a motion to enter into executive session in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 121.22 to discuss the appointment, employment, dismissal, and compensation of a public employee, and to discuss matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulations or state statutes?
So, moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabrick?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved, 5-0.
The board will go into executive session, so if you would exit out of the Google Meet and connect through your Zoom meeting, and we'll continue the board meeting there. The board will go into executive session, so if you would exit out of the Google Meet and connect through your Zoom meeting and we'll continue the board meeting there.
Thank you. We were declared out of executive session at 8:36. Dr. Mike, do you want to go over the announcements?
Sure, just kind of a recap announcements and a couple of words about these. So Monday and Tuesday, 21st and 22nd, we're on remote learning. We had announced that back before Thanksgiving. And then December 23rd is a staff professional development day. And then, of course, the 24th starts the holidays. And then school was to resume on January 4th. And, you know, after a lot of discussion and a lot of talking with lots of people, we made the decision to go to remote learning for the three weeks till the end of this semester. That seemed like a natural breaking point. Then students could choose to roll over to the digital academy. And the hugest part of that decision was that not having staff to run our buildings. I mean, there were days when we just did not, at several of our buildings, have enough staff. And that, that starts to be a safety issue, and it starts to wear on people. And so that's a huge piece of why we made that decision. But that's, and we'll be, we'll, we'll put some more announcements and things out. But that's the announcements about the school calendar.
Thank you. Thank you.
I, you know, to, to the public, that wasn't a decision made by the board in a board meeting. That was administrative.
Correct. That was an administrative decision in collaboration with the administrative team. That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And but just so you know, we're not the only one that's going to go to some remote after, after break. So a couple more I saw on the list went on today. So we're not the only ones.
Thank you.
Okay, the next board meeting, the organizational meeting will be held January 7, 2021. We'll hold that at 6:30 p.m. to be immediately followed by the regular meeting, and then the regular meeting on January 21st. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Second.
During discussion? Please call through.
Mr. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved, 5-0.
Thank you, and Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Happy New Year.
One Merry Christmas.